Call this meeting to order. This is the Northfield Public School Board meeting. It is Monday, August 13th, 2012. Dr. Richardson, you had a couple items in the table file.
Yes, in terms of a report item, we've added a third report item. We wanted to give you a technology update on the work of the tech transformation effort this summer and kind of where we are as we get ready to start the school year. We also have several additional personnel items in terms of appointments increases, decreases, changes in assignment, leaves of absence and resignations. We also have a couple of long-term contracts with both the School and Canvas Church and a gift agreement for your review.
Great. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Does not look like we have anyone here. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. For members, you had in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting from July 9th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff, seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approved. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, and I'm going to limit this to one because I'm sure Matt will, as he shares information about technology, will recognize our staff for their work. And I'd like to recognize Matt and the other members of the tech team and several of our teachers who basically volunteered to do training during the tech boot camp in the July, beginning of August. Had an outstanding group of staff members and I think some really great presentations. I learned a lot and I know that other folks were really appreciative. I've never seen a group of adults so tuned into what they were doing. It was not the typical staff development activity. I don't want to steal any more of your thunder. The other piece is, and this is kind of of an addition to the previous announcement, we talked before about the fact that middle school principal Jeff Peschta was identified as the middle level principal of the year for the Southeast Division of the MASSP, the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. They had their annual conference on the 20th. At this point then, that allows him to move forward in the competition. He will be under consideration to represent the 1,300 state principals at the Minnesota Principal of the Year activities during the selection process. That will take place this fall. And he was also recognized for his 15 years of service as a principal in Minnesota. So he's working forward in terms of the possibilities of being selected as the Minnesota Middle School Principal of the Year.
Any other announcements?
Ball sports start today. Go Raiders.
All right.
And they were out there in force.
And it wasn't 90 degrees.
And it was a beautiful day. It could have been, could have been much worse.
Good football, by the way.
Yes.
All right. We will move on to items for discussion report. And the first item we have is, Dr. Richardson, you're going to present the changes in the principal and teacher evaluations.
Right. And I want to do both of these fairly informally, both this piece and the piece on school funding. But I just thought it was very important that before we begin to talk about celebrations and challenges for the upcoming year in the school district, that I try to also identify for you some major pieces that are moving forward from the state level that are going to be impacting our buildings, our building principals, the teaching staff in our buildings, and will have some pronounced impact in terms of the workload and the activities that we're going to be involved in. And so I want to share some information about the two evaluation pieces. I'd also like to share just a little bit of information, just to give you an update in terms of the task force work as far as the achievement assessment task force and a little bit of an update in terms of the bullying task force report. Because all of those are going to have some major impacts on us as we move forward at different times of the year. And I think it's just important for the board to understand that above and beyond anything that's going on inside the system, and I think we've got some really great things that are happening inside the system, there will be at least four pieces that are going to have a significant impact on us from outside. So I want to talk first of all about the evaluation pieces. And I think as most of you know from listening to the results over the last couple of years from the legislature, that basically there's been a passage of both principal and teacher valuation statutes that have been added to the statutes that impact school districts. Remember that these statutes really also reflect on the fact that the No Child Left Behind waiver that was approved by the federal government required us to have updated and more sophisticated evaluation systems for both teachers and principals. And so the two pieces kind of dovetail together in terms of giving the opportunity for us to be eligible for the waiver, but those pieces are going to have some significant impact on us in terms of work. The principal evaluation piece is the first one I'd like to share a little bit of information about because it's the first one that is really going to come directly at us. Because this year, we're in the pilot year of this process. And next year, every building principal across the state of Minnesota is going to be required to have a full evaluation each year from then on. This year, we're one of 17 school districts that have voluntarily chosen to be a pilot district, which means we're going to have an opportunity to try out the system in advance. We're going to have the opportunity hopefully to make some significant feedback to that system and hopefully some positive changes will make that happen. The real difference as we look at the principal evaluation is in the past. Most school districts like ours typically had an evaluation on anywhere from a three to five-year cycle. So typically, the building principal is evaluated every three to five years. In our case, it was every five. And while if there were specific issues or concerns for principal, those could be addressed anytime during the five-year period. The form of evaluation process, which would include a written evaluation, a written self-evaluation, oftentimes a 360 review from staff and other individuals, only happened once every five years. The new principal model is going to require that to happen every single year. And as part of that, there's really three core components. There's going to be one component that really is what I'd call a traditional evaluation piece. And that includes a self-evaluation by the building administrator, their performance, looking at the areas of growth, the areas of strength. There would then also be a supervisor evaluation of the employee, again, based on the principal behaviors, knowledge and skills. And those are focused on those that are identified as part of the state's view of what are the elements that are appropriate for every principal to be able to demonstrate. So that piece is fairly traditional. The second piece is a stakeholder feedback piece, which will require the supervisor basically to survey and get feedback from the stakeholders that that building administrator oversees. And initially, it's very likely to just focus on teachers and other staff within the building that are going to be giving that feedback. We're being told right now that they're going to be, the state is going to be giving us some examples of two or three systems for surveying that we can use. We asked them initially, can we just create our own? They said no. They wanted us to basically, to use one of the systems that they identify. And they're using a consulting group out of Colorado to help identify what they believe are the strongest survey documents that are out there. Then the third piece that has been probably the most controversial component is school performance measure, which is part of how the principal will be evaluated. And the thing that has really made this controversial is that the state has determined that 35% of the principal's evaluation will be based on student achievement as measured by a variety of measures. It can include things like MAP testing, could include things like school improvement plan goals, but it also is going to have to have the MCA testing as part of that measurement. And there's not really a, at this point, a clear design from the state as to how much of that 35% needs to be MCA versus how much could be MAP or how much could be school improvement plan goals. But those pieces have to be in place. And we need to identify in advance of beginning to do the evaluation, what is, what that 35% component is going to be made up of. Also then, we have to determine of the remaining 65%, how much will be the evaluation ratings based on knowledge and skills and performance and how much will be based, how much of the total evaluation will be based on stakeholder feedback. So in other words, we could determine that we're going to have 10% for the, for the survey feedback and 55%, or it may be 40 and 25, or whatever might be the combo. The piece with this evaluation that's a little bit different than the one for teachers is that in the end, this pilot will generate a model. And what we're being told as pilot districts is that the model then will be given to other districts and they may or may not use the model that we create. But whatever they choose to do must reflect all of the statutory requirements, which says to me, there probably can't be a significant amount of variation from this in the end. But right now, they're really not saying to us, everybody's going to have to do exactly the same evaluation. I just don't believe frankly that there's going to be a significant amount of difference. The other thing that's going to be very different from in the past is that in doing this then every single year, there will be a component that must occur very close to the beginning of the school year in terms of goal setting and preparation. There'll need to be a mid-year review and then there'll need to be an end-of-year conference. So again, what we've gone from is situation where the supervisor basically is responsible for doing an evaluation once every five years and potentially just a end-of-year evaluation to now every single principal, three times a year, every year. So as you kind of think about what's, what's going on there, that's a significant difference in the level of evaluation that's going to occur. I think that the focus with this evaluation model, at this point from the state is, you know, they're saying they're there to monitor and support. But I think the other thing that's going to be important as we watch it unfold is going to be what accountability measures the state uses to make sure that everybody is doing at least the minimum requirements of the state law. So that's what's happening with the principal growth evaluation process. And again, the focus here is this is one year to pilot this. At the end of this year, the pilot is shared with other districts and the information is shared, but in the fall of 2013, 14, everybody is required to begin this process for every building principal. So that piece is in place. The second piece that then will come on the heels of that is the teacher evaluation component. It is not nearly as far along in the process. And in fact, they are busily working on it right now at the state level. There's a group of individuals involved in a task force that is putting together the plan for the teacher evaluation. If there's a component that's the same, the component that's the same is 35% of the evaluation must be based on student achievement data. So the exact same percentage that the principals are required to have it. Again, they're looking at evaluation or assessment data that could be several different types. It could be MAP data, it could be MCA data, it could be other kinds of data that is collected. But again, the key thing is that there must be some MCA data as part of the process, which is where it gets a little bit more difficult for teachers. Because if you think about it, when you have MCA tests that only measure reading, mathematics, writing and science, there are a chunk of areas when you get to the secondary level for which teachers have no evaluation, assessment that currently is in place, other than classroom tests. And so a big piece of the discussion right now is what are going to be the appropriate pieces to make this happen? The second thing that's really different with the teacher evaluation piece is that, again, this, this evaluation goes from where we are right now with our tenured staff, which is once every five years, to again, every single year being evaluated. But the discussion at this point in terms of the teacher evaluation is that actually is a three-year component. So you actually could look at part of the, of the evaluation, the first year, part of it the second year, and then the third year do a summation or summative kind of approach that would let you know kind of what the overall performance is for the, for the teachers. So it feels a little bit different than the principal's evaluation in terms of the fact that that cycle actually is a three, it's a three-parter. The other piece that's different is that we're in the principal evaluation, only individuals that are identified, either the superintendent or designee, can be involved in the evaluation of building principals. That basically for two of the three years of the each teacher evaluation, it could be individuals that don't necessarily have a license to be an evaluator. So in other words, it could be teacher mentors, it could be peer coaches, it could be other types of folks that could be involved in that process. But the reality is, no matter what, we're talking about a huge increase in terms of the cost of doing the evaluation process. And whether it's the fact that, that your building administrators now are involved on almost a daily basis with doing evaluation activities for, for staff, or whether you're having to bring teachers that you identify as teacher mentors out of the classroom so that they can take part in the peer evaluation efforts, we know that there's going to be a significant increase in cost. And please remember that there's nothing in the law that talks about any additional funding to make this happen. The other thing that's very different with this is with the principals, again, in terms of the process, in the end, school districts can choose the model they want. They don't have to take the model that's piloted this year and had worked on this year. For the teachers' evaluation, there has to be an agreement between the teachers' association and the school district on the model. And if there is no agreement, then the state plan or the state model will become the default model that the district will have to use. So the effort is going to be, as we go into this, and especially over the course of the next year and a half, is going to be sitting down with our teachers' association and really talking about, can we resolve and come to agreement as to what all these pieces need to look like? And hopefully come to a resolution that makes sense? Or are we in the end going to say, we can't do that and then we have to use basically the state, the state model? So it feels a little bit different there too in terms of that piece. In terms of the evaluation work group for teachers, their self-imposed deadline is December 31st of this year to have the model completed and ready to share with the commissioner. Before that, they're supposed to have, be sending out a survey document and evaluation document to all of the districts. We haven't seen anything of that yet. Obviously, I'm very concerned about can they actually get the work done? And if they do, in order to meet their own self-imposed deadline, will there be some quality issues because of that? I'm a lot more comfortable, I guess, with the principal's model, only maybe because we've been in the, in the pilot. I'm not sure if I was, if we were in a district that wasn't in the pilot, I'd be as comfortable that we could come up with, with a process that would really be workable. Again, the real focus with this that's different also for both the principals and the teachers' piece is that once this evaluation is done and all the components are lined up, then you have to be in a position to identify what's the outcome for the person being evaluated. And that can go all the way from everything is fine and you need to keep moving forward with what you're doing, to a model that says, no, we need to work together to determine what things you need to work on and fix. Or the, at the other end, to a improvement plan that is either moving you toward, through a supervisor-directed model, to the higher level of performance that we're looking for or the potential for other kind of disciplinary action. So it, it's, it's much more stringent, I think, than anything that we've ever seen So I think it's important to realize that I think as people are working with this, we're going to need to be very cognizant of how people are feeling because I think there's going to be some pressure all, all around from administrators trying to figure out how to work on their own, as well as administrators and teachers trying to figure out how to work together on the teachers' portion. And I think probably some level of frustration because the resources to really do that work aren't there. And when we fully implement the teacher model, I think there's going to be a significant press on our building administrators because of the fact that the evaluation load for them is going to go up significantly. Because the piece that doesn't change is every probationary teacher still needs three full rounds of evaluation each year. And so on top of that, now we're going to add an evaluation round for every other teacher in the building. And if you think about some of our buildings, you know, high school, we're approaching 100, you know, staff, 100 licensed staff members. So even with 1.8 assistant principals and a principal, you're looking at over 30-plus teachers per building administrator. And in our elementary buildings, in some buildings, probably more than 30 administrators. If you think about that in the private sector, and you think about what is the evaluation load or what is the supervisory load, no, I'm going to look at you thinking about Sheldon and control data and whatever. My guess is that in most cases, it's five to 10 people that you have direct supervisory responsibility for.
It depends on the makeup of the department. In my case, I had about seven or eight engineers and about equal number of techs. And so my responsibility for evaluation was for all of them.
For the 14.
It was easier to evaluate the technicians than it was to evaluate the engineers. So you're right, it's roughly one to about seven or eight.
And, and, yeah, I mean, that's, that's typical if you think of the private sector. And so this is a piece that again, as, as we work through this, it's the idea that typically school districts are very lean on administrative support. And, and so when you look at the number of individuals to be evaluated by each person, you know, we're going to put some strain on, on the system in terms of that piece. And we're not necessarily, we don't necessarily have the extra resources to make that happen. Again, at this point, the legislature, the governor have not talked at all about the idea that there needs to be additional resources. So that's kind of the, the focus of these first two pieces is just an awareness that pivoting the, the principal evaluation this year, working that process through trying to make sure we have that nailed down to where we can implement it completely in the fall of 2013. At the same time, teacher evaluation, the model is supposed to be done by the 31st of December. We're supposed to begin seeing that then after the first of the year. We need to be sitting down with teachers and working through that process because by approximately the middle of next year, we need to have all the pieces together so that we know how we're going to start in the fall of 14 with every teacher being evaluated again every school year. So I think it's, this is a challenge. I'm not arguing that it's important to be accountable, but I'm also saying that this is a significant additional mandate that has been placed on us. And again, part of it, as, as the legislature placing that mandate on us, part of it is that, that was the driver, one of the drivers that allowed the waiver to be approved. So we had some sanctions lifted from us, but you know, it's sometimes like, be careful what you wish for because then other sanctions take their place. So that's kind of the pieces there. And I just wanted you to have a, just an overview sense of that. The two other pieces I think that are important for you to be aware of that are outside the system. And again, what I want to do at our next meeting will be, we'll go through the celebrations and challenges piece like we do each year and kind of talk about in our own district, what are the things we want to celebrate, the, the good things that we've been able to get done and also to identify the challenges coming forward. But there are really two other major pieces that are coming at us from the state level. One of those pieces is a mandate by the state and also by the governor to really rethink the entire testing and assessment process. And initially driven by some really significant concerns about the impact of what's called the grad test. And if you remember, for a number of years in Minnesota, we had BSTs, the basic skills tests that were given in eighth grade, which were really looking at kind of minimum competency tests. And a student that didn't pass the BST in eighth grade that had multiple times between eighth grade and 12th grade to bring themselves up to where they could pass the BST. What's happened now is that the BST has been phased out and it's been replaced with what's called the grad. And the grad really is a much, much more rigorous test that's measuring students in terms of their performance in 10th and 11th grade in reading, writing, mathematics and science. And what, what we're seeing right now is that the initial pieces coming out of the grad test, we're doing pretty well in terms of the reading piece and the writing piece, but we're seeing across the state of Minnesota, about 40% of the high school seniors cannot pass the math grad test. Now in Northfield, we do much better. And, and we only have right now about eight, I was going to say 8%. It's either 8% or actually eight kids that I think ended up with a waiver this last year to allow them to graduate that didn't have the math test completed. But that took multiple retests of that test to do that. What the state did initially after they put the grad in place and really laid those pieces out, they very quickly realized that they had increased the rigor of the math test dramatically. If you think about it, you know, the BST measuring eighth grade was really looking at kids basically having almost pre-algebra skills. The grad test requires them to have algebra II skills. That's a tremendous change in terms of the expectations. And there obviously is concern across the state as to, you know, is that the right cut? Is that the right piece they should be looking at? Even more the concern is that, you know, people are using this to say, well, this is the test that is, measures college and career readiness. And yet it doesn't include any of the 21st century skills. It really doesn't necessarily equate to achievement on the ACT. It really doesn't necessarily equate to achievement on the ACT, or the SAT, or the Accuplacer, which are all the assessments that are typically used at the college level to determine readiness to be successful. And the data that's in place doesn't really exist to be able to say, performance on the grad test really does match up with success in college or readiness to enter a career. So there's some real struggle right now as to what needs to happen. On top of that, right now, the governor's saying he's really concerned about the amount of assessment that we're doing. And I think we've talked about that at this table over and over again, over the last seven or eight years, that we've continued to increase the number of tests that kids are required to take. We think about it, you know, every student is taking a reading and a math test every year from grades three through eight, then again in, in 10 or 11. They're taking a science test once in the elementary, once in the middle, and once in the high school. They're taking a writing test at the 10th grade level. They're taking a, so they're taking multiple kinds of tests. And if we think about the amount of time that students in those grades spend in assessment, it's tremendous. And I think the governor and some of our legislators, rightly so, are saying, is this too much? In other words, are we spending all of our time assessing so we don't have as much time to actually teach students and help to support them? So the, the assessment task force has really been charged to look at all of this. And I think initially, we're, we're coming back to the folks who are running that task force and saying, we have 15 hours to determine all of this stuff. And we, we're saying, that's not physically possible to do. We're not going to get this job done. And if we don't, and we end up with something that isn't of high quality, we're doing a disservice to kids, a disservice to school districts, a disservice to the state. So part of what we're going to be pressing for over the next month or so is going to be to try to narrow the focus of this task force and really focus initially on the grad and say, let's, let's take this thing on one piece at a time, because initially, we've got to address the grad piece. But we also need to take a look at all the other assessments that are in place. Because not only are people talking about, well, what are we doing with those, but then people on the other end of the spectrum are saying, but really, we need to be measuring these kindergartners and first graders and second graders that we aren't measuring right now. And what are we going to do about that? So in other words, we're going to, you know, there's some individuals that are wanting to pile another set of tests on top of that. The interesting thing was, we had our back-to-school conference that the commissioner puts on each fall. They brought in Tony Wagner, and they brought in some staff from Finland. And if you don't know, Finland, right now, on the PISA test, which is the International Test Measuring Math and Reading Performance, is the number one country in the world. What they basically said is, everything they're doing in Finland is 100 degrees in opposition of what we're headed toward. In Finland, they do not assess kids until ninth or 10th grade. Kids have, what was it, 15 minutes of recess time until they get to ninth grade every 75 minutes. They have a shorter school day. They do not have a longer school year. And yet they perform better than any other country in the world. And of course, the initial pieces, well, aren't they all finished? Well, they're not. They're, they're, they're really growing their immigrant population, with the larger cities in Finland basically have, much like we have in Minnesota, you know, districts that are, have, you know, kids speaking 45 different languages. And a lot of people coming out of Eastern Europe who are moving into the Scandinavian countries. But they made some real significant choices about what, what they were doing, and the focus was on trust. You know, we want to trust our educators to do what's right, and we want to trust school districts to do what they need to do. And they made a conscious effort to head that direction almost 40 years ago. So all of us, as we're working through this, are kind of saying, we're getting these really mixed messages as to, as to what the world is supposed to be like. And, and in this case, the commissioner is bringing in Tony Wagner, bringing in the people from Finland, whatever, saying this is the, might be the future of where we need to go to really make a difference. And what we're doing is going headlong into doing more and more assessment, more and more rigor, more and more, you know, focus on accountability and evaluation, which in itself is not bad, but the question becomes, is there a tipping point where you spend all your time weighing the pig and don't remember to feed the pig? Now, that, that's when my Iowa roots come up. You know, that's the old story about, about the, the county agent that goes out to, to see the farmer. And the, he says, well, you know, what do I need to do to make sure my pigs grow? Well, you need to weigh your pig every day so that you're determining what's happened. Well, agent comes back, two, three months later, all the pigs are dead. And he says, well, what happened? He said, well, I weighed the pigs every day, but they died because, you know, I didn't really bother to feed them because I was too interested in weighing them. So there, there is a piece where we need to really think about kind of what's the right balance. So that piece is sitting out there. That's going to have a significant impact on us as we go forward, because beginning in, in 2014, our seniors have to pass the grad test in order to graduate. And if they don't, they cannot get a diploma. And so there's real concerns about what's the right balance, what should it look like? But maybe even more basic is, is the test, testing what we said it was? Is it valid? Is it really a valid test? And if it is, is the cut score, or the place where we say you're proficient, is it the right cut score for what needs to be there? And I know some of you probably have read some of the articles that have been now popping out, especially in the Times and other places, talking about the fact that people are questioning, does every kid need Algebra II? Does every kid need Algebra? You know, and I, I would argue, you know, a level of, of math skill is important, but I think there's some real discussions about what should be the, the right pieces that are part of the measures. So that piece is sitting out there. And then the final piece I want to share with you, which is the piece that just came out last week, is the bullying task force made its recommendations to Governor Dayton on August 1st. And the concern that's going to come at us with that particular piece is going to be based on the fact that the individuals that were involved in the task force up until about the 11th hour did not include teachers or administrators at either the building or the district level. It was legislators and community members. And as a result, the task force report includes a number of pieces that while I, at an ideal level, are very appropriate in terms of, obviously, we would not want any child to be bullied. We don't want any child to be harassed. But what's being recommended in terms of the immediate action is, is really a much stronger law that basically repeals what's currently in place, which I think the state has gotten a significant amount of, of pushback on because it's, I think it's 37 words. And really, all it says is, you know, no, no child should be bullied. And what they want to replace it with is very, very fine definition of bullying, harassment, intimidation. They want to establish what the baseline policies are going to be for every school district. They want to require all districts to create policies and practices. And obviously, we have a bullying policy already in place, which is very clear in terms of not only what it is, but also what we're going to do if, if we determine that it's occurring. The next piece is, they're going to, to, again, put us under a microscope to measure it. So also, there's going to be a data collection process that's going to now be added, where according to the task force, they want to make sure that they monitor every case of bullying across the state in every single school district, and that it's reported at the district level and the state level. And that they are going to actually create, are proposing to create a school climate center, which not only will do a training piece, which makes sense, but also will do a monitoring piece to make sure that every bit of information is there. The good thing is, as opposed to the other three things we've just talked about, they are suggesting that there must be fiscal resources made available to local districts to make this happen. Now, what we don't know with this is, again, this is just a task force report. It went to the governor. We anticipate that there will be law written based on this task force set of recommendations. That's going to be coming up and we believe will be in play during the 2013 legislative session. And so what we really want to make sure is that as we look at this, we look at the, the quality of the definition, the quality of the, of the detailed information, the level of reporting that's required, and who the reporting is to, and how much additional work is involved in making this happen too. And it's not the work necessarily of the, of trying to reduce or eliminate bullying, because I think that work is vital and important. But it's the question of how much time is going to be spent in terms of noting and detailing and sharing all of the information about every suspected disciplinary incident that might raise itself to bullying. The other piece that I, I would just share, the concern is, you remember a few months ago, we did a modification of our bullying policy. And we went to the Olveas, Olveas system, which comes out of another Scandinavian country, I believe it's Norway. They've been studying bullying and the effects of bullying for, I think, almost two decades. And they had really written some really, we think, high-quality definitions. And if you remember, the key focus of those was the idea that for it to really be bullying, it can't be a single isolated incident. It needs to be a pattern. It also needs to be a, a situation where there is a perceived imbalance of power. Well, the definition that we're seeing so far in the task force is, any incident, any individual incident, any individual perception of bullying. I was left out of a group. I didn't get, I wasn't able to play with other kids that I wanted to play with on the playground. So I, I just think we need to be very, very careful as we go forward. And I'm, my sense is, we're going to need to take some time and really work with our legislators here, because this is one that is a lightning rod issue. Because nobody wants to see a child be bullied. Nobody wants to see a child be harassed. But I think we also have to have some common sense around what really is a, an incident of bullying. And, and what really raises itself to bullying. Two students are playing on the playground of the same size, and they both go for a ball, and, and one knocks the other one down. Is that bullying? Probably not. But according to the, the, what we're hearing in terms of the initial definitions, it could be classified that way. So again, I, while I think we tried to address some of those pieces with our policy revision, it's very likely we're going to see some significant effort there. So I just wanted to share, those are kind of the four big rocks outside of our own operation that are going to be facing us. Principal evaluation, teacher evaluation, bullying assessment. Any questions about those?
Board members? No?
I have a question regarding the grad test.
Yes.
Is a grad test based on a college-bound student or a post-secondary student?
Well, initially, the grad test is embedded in the MCAs. So when a student takes their 10th grade reading MCA, or their 11th grade math MCA, the questions for the grad test are embedded inside it. Supposedly, those questions are focused on the, the standards that have been identified in that particular subject area that students of that grade level are supposed to be able to do. So the, it's really, it's really standards identified for high school students. Some person who was much more, I won't say witty, because maybe it wouldn't be witty, but has said it various times, that in many cases in the state of Minnesota, we never met a standard we didn't like. But there are lots of standards built into the, into each of these tests. And so I think the, the issue is, do those standards really line up with, or can we really demonstrate that achievement of those standards actually predicts, or actually demonstrates, achievement in college, or achievement in a career? Problem is, those, the, the data to do that, while they may be collecting it, doesn't exist right now. As opposed to, if your child takes the SAT test, or the Accuplacer, or the ACT test, those, because of the fact that they, they have had millions of kids taking those tests over the years, and then they've tracked those kids on into college, they can basically say, if you have X score on the ACT, you, you are, have a, you know, 75% chance, or an 80% chance, or whatever, of being successful in college. The current grad tests don't do that. The other, other big issue, Noel, that we're facing is the fact that we don't do the grad test in mathematics till 11th grade, at the end of 11th grade in April. So that means a student who doesn't pass the first iteration of the grad test in 11th grade now only has their senior year to get things straightened out. And, you know, we're doing everything we can right now to make that happen. But the problem is, the tests that are given before the grad-level test aren't necessarily good predictors of how they do in the grad version. And then after they take the grad the first time, and either 10th or 11th grade is embedded in their MCA test, then they actually take a separate grad test if they have to do retakes, which has all the MCA questions that aren't part of the grad test peeled away, and they only take the test that's, that's the grad test piece at that point. Right now, by state waiver, a student who doesn't pass the MCA math test grad portion, if they take that, that test three more times, then the district can, can have a waiver and allow them to graduate even though they didn't pass. But that basically is sunsetting and goes away. And so in 2014, a student that, that doesn't pass the grad test this next spring, basically will not graduate from high school in 2014 if they don't pass the grad test in math. And that'll be the key one, because what we're seeing is that the, the rigor level and the cut score level for the reading and the writing tests, we're finding our kids can reach. The same issue we faced with the grad test too, is the same test, the same concern we have with the MCAs. If you remember, when the new MCA test in math came out, what happened to our scores? Everywhere, the entire state, the scores went down. Now, they're starting to rebound, and we're starting to see those come back up. But the issue is, you know, they, they, when they created the, the MCA threes and the grad questions and the MCA three, they were at a much more rigorous level. And, and I think the state has said, well, you know, we want to be rigorous. Well, and that's fine. But then if you're trying to compare, how did a kid do on the MCA two with how the kid did on the MCA three, there's no comparison, because the, the two tests don't test the same things.
Okay.
Other questions?
Jeff?
Just a...
Just on the bullying issue, I mean, I can, we're just getting to the point where you're getting micromanaged by bureaucratic system. And I'm not saying that there's, you know, there's good ideas in there, but I can envision, you know, walking down the hall and seeing the bully referee that's throwing the flag, you know. It's just, you know, and I think what we need to get back to is entrust, you know, the leaders and the teachers and the administrators within the school as far as helping kids, you know, get along and learn leadership principles. And that's part of the grown-up process. And I don't think that that should be, you know, given more local authority to administrators and teachers and school boards, you know, to set those kinds of standards and not, you know.
Well, and I think a part of, you know, what we've seen in this district for a number of years now is the whole concept of the web program and the link program and whatever, is the idea of saying, one of the best ways to avoid bullying activity occurring is that you basically connect with those new kids coming into the building. You get them hooked up with older-level kids that they can
Peer-to-peer mentoring.
Relate to and get that mentoring to occur. And, you know, I know that there's not a school district in the state of Minnesota that doesn't have bullying issues going on. And both bullying issues that are the traditional, you know, face-to-face kind of thing, and also a whole set of bullying issues that have occurred because of cyberbullying, which has now made it almost easier for bullies to be bullies, because they can do it with anonymity of, you know, on Facebook, I put this on your wall, you know, I sent this piece of information out. I bounced this several different places and it came back to you. So, you know, there's no question that the issue isn't there. And obviously, it's an important issue, because what we're also seeing is, you know, the spike in suicides. We're seeing a spike in students across the state, and, you know, I don't have any, I don't have the specifics for Northfield, but also of kids that are hurting themselves because of the feeling, their feelings, and how they feel in terms of their interaction. But my sense is, you know, I think, you know, each district is trying very hard to get that working. I'm not sure to what extent bringing in, you know, another set of tools that we have, not use, but another set of things that we have to report to and put information into and whatever. Again, are we measuring the pig and not feeding the pig?
Other board members? Well, I really appreciate, and I'm sure the rest of the board does, kind of getting the heads up and thinking out to the future. I had one question.
Sure.
I know you said none of these working groups are thinking about dollar amounts, or at least only the assessment.
Except for the, well, except for the bullying.
Oh, the bullying group.
The bullying group actually said their eighth item in their final report was fiscal resources must be made available at the state and local levels to facilitate these efforts as outlined by the task force. So they understand, this is going to cost more money to do this. But nothing in the assessment group and nothing in either the principal or teacher evaluation has identified that it's going to cost any more to do these things.
So, but I would, can only imagine that other districts are thinking about it and having to put some sort of dollar amount in the future on this. I mean, is there, you talk to other superintendents, are people starting to get a sense of personnel ours that we're going to be looking at and being able to attach a dollar amount to that?
I think they all know it's going to cost more. I don't think, I think until they really grapple with what the model looks like, I think it's going to be difficult to really put the numbers to this. And I think especially for the teacher one, because that one, you know, they, where, you know, in the case of, let's say, our district in terms of the principals, you know, we're talking about five principals, three assistant principals. But in terms of teachers, we're talking 300 and some teachers. And not a lot of people to evaluate those folks. And the fact that we didn't change anything for the probationary staff. So it isn't that we reduced the amount of evaluation we need to do there, and we absolutely need to do that, because they're the folks that we have, have the ability to make the greatest immediate change or to make decisions in terms of continuing employment, is to do those three, complete evaluation cycles every single year for those folks, so that you can make good decisions about, do they stay with us and do they continue the process. But the other piece is going to be a tremendous impact, I think, in terms of people. But no, I don't think, people just know it's, there's a cost, but they haven't really put that together. I'm sure that's going to be coming, however.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Noel has one more.
Oh, sorry, Chanel?
I think on evaluations, I believe the learning curve is going to be significant. Maybe one thing, once you've established procedures and scheduling and all the rest of it, but I think the learning term is going to, learning curve is going to be intimidating, just to get started.
Well, and I think, no matter what the pushback is going to be, are the, do the tools really measure what the tools are purported to measure? It's the same issue we have on the assessment task force. Do the tools, do the tests we do actually measure what we want to measure, what we're saying we're measuring? The question is going to be, are the things that we're using as part of the toolkit to evaluate principals and teachers, do they really measure that performance? And it is the piece where you say, remember that teaching is part art and part science, and why you can reduce the science to measurable calibration. The art of, the art of being a great teacher is not necessarily something that you can, you can put out on a piece of paper and evaluate in that way. But that's, that'll be where we're at, so. Okay?
Very good.
All right?
All right. And you've got some more information to share.
I have more fun stuff. I can see Matt is just waiting with bated breath.
Absolutely.
This piece, I think, will go a little faster, but I do want to just kind of bring you up to speed with kind of what we're facing as we move toward the 2013 legislature. And actually, when I did this, this was triggered by, I'm starting to meet with legislative candidates, and what I wanted to do for them is kind of share as a district and as a state where I see us, both in the funding and the policy issues going forward. Because we are going in, again, to an appropriations year. It is a situation where I think they need to be taking a look at where we're sitting in terms of funding. And obviously, we know we have a difficult economic situation. We know that that's had tremendous impact in terms of how we've dealt with funding for schools over the last several years. But I think it's also important to try to help legislators understand this. So what I really want to do is kind of just do a very quick primer for you guys, because I know you interact with legislators off and on as we go forward, and I wanted you to kind of have the same information I've been sharing. So, as I said, basically, I've kind of broken this into two parts. Really, it comes down to an initial premise, and that is, I believe, and I think, the districts we tend to work with on a regular basis believe that every public school student ought to have equal access to high-quality education regardless of where they live. I guess the other message is, your zip code shouldn't determine what the quality of educational program you have. District. And because we're one of those districts that has a lower valuation, we're impacted negatively. I think we all need to go back and remember that, and I hate to point to one guy who's responsible for getting this going, as the governor in the school district where I was at the time, I do need to come back to Governor Ventura, because he was the one that created the great, the big plan. It wasn't great, but the big plan, that basically was a property tax reform process that said, we're going to eliminate the general education levy totally. That reduced levies in Minnesota, made tax, property taxpayers really happy, because the, the general, removing the gen ed levy moved us down from a $1.9 billion tax, set of taxes, down to 924 million. The problem was, the general ed levy was the single fairest tax we had, because it was spread across every district in the state. Every district basically paid the same amount. It was fully equalized, so that if you were in a low valuation district, the state equalized more of your gen ed levy. If you were a high valuation district, the state did little or no equalization of your levy. But it made sure that if you had a $100,000 house in one district or a $100,000 house in another district, you paid the same number of dollars to generate that general ed levy. When that disappeared, the piece that was there, and I guess I can't pick totally on Jesse, because at the time, Jesse's finance director said, we now have to have a set of new taxes to replace the gen ed levy. And as you can imagine, as the only independent in the place, I think there was one independent in the legislature at that time, everybody was very happy to reduce property taxes. Nobody was happy with the idea of doing any kind of replacement taxes for the property tax, general ed, property tax levy that was eliminated. So what we ended up with was then this huge hole that was created. That was really a billion-dollar hole that was created back in 2002. So as a result of that, two things happened. First of all, without that gen ed levy in place, now you depend on sales and income tax to generate the state aid portion of funding. And that is not nearly as steady or predictable as property tax. In the last 10 years, basically, we've had four years with no increase in the gen ed formula, and over the last two decades, we haven't kept up with inflation. And I'll share some graphics that show you what the differential is. If we wanted to match the buying power of the formula back in 1991, 92, today, we would have to have $2,136 more per pupil in the formula than we have right now. And so a big issue, and the issue, the reason that we're seeing so many of the districts going out for operating levies, is that's the hole. And basically, what's happened across the state is that local districts have then had to come back and try to fill that hole with operating levy. And the problem is that when you try to pass referenda, because it isn't just a school district can say, well, we want to, we want to add to your property taxes and we're going to do a levy, we have to take every levy we asked for to the voters. And so that created a very random and inequitable system, where property wealth impacted not only whether you could pass the levy or not, but also how much levy you could pass. So what we've seen is, over the last decade, we've seen a $2.3 billion growth in levies, almost 150%. The other problem that we have is, as those levies have come back in place, we haven't seen any changes in the equalization formula. Back in the, when the equalization formula was first put in place, it was based on a per pupil amount of $476,000. That hasn't changed in the entire time the equalization formula's been in place. But as you, as you can imagine, the amount of valuation per pupil has gone up drastically, dramatically in that chunk of time. And so as a result, districts that used to get equalization funds to help balance out the impact on taxpayers have fallen off the equalization, receiving an equalization, and for the most part, very few of any school districts in the state now receive equalization funding, which basically saved the states some money, because they're not paying out equalization dollars. As a result then, we basically have a property tax burden that is significantly different between districts, even when you're looking at the same-priced property. And when you want to generate the same amount of revenue, a taxpayer in a high property tax district pays a much lower rate of taxes to generate the same amount of operating levy as a low-wealth district. The other thing is, beyond the operating levy, almost all the other levies we have are not equalized. So lease levy, career and technical levy, capital projects levy, you name it, health and safety, all of those now are basically almost 100% of a property tax. So every time there's a levy that's in place, even if the state gives us the authority to do the levy, the impact on taxpayers in Northfield is significantly higher than it is in those districts that are high wealth. So all of those are funding pieces that I think are there. And before I look at policy then, let's just take a quick look at the exhibits. Exhibit one, which is the history of the basic formula. Remember, we talked about the fact that we needed $2,100 and some dollars in order to get us where we are? Here's basically the calculation. And what you can see is what the formula was in 1991, 92, up to 2011, 12. You'll also see dollar increases that were attributed every time supposed increases were there. And the perceived percentage increase. So what it's basically saying is, if you looked at it from a perceived average increase, there'd be about a 2.7% increase per year in terms of the formula allowance. The problem is that a chunk of those are what are called roll-ins. And basically, what a roll-in is when money that was already going to schools is taken out of categorical aid and rolled into the formula. And so every time we have a roll-in, and let's look at 1994, 95, for example, basically, there was a referendum conversion at that time. So basically, if you had $100 in referendum at that time, they added $100 to the formula, but they wiped out your referendum. So did you get any more money? Not one single penny. But they count it as a 3.2% increase in the formula. So you'll see through the years that there were multiple roll-ins that occurred. The reality is, the real percentage change over that 20-plus-year period is about 1.3% per year. And the CPI inflation is about 3% per year. So what it means is, again, if you go back and say, what was our buying power with $3,050 back in 1991, 92, we'd have to add $2,100 and some dollars in order just to have the same amount of buying power that we had back in 91, 92. So that's the first issuer problem. The second piece, in terms, and this really just does it graphically, it just shows you what was the actual basic formula allowance from year to year, and what it would have been if it was adjusted for inflation. And again, you have the $2,136 gap. So that's not adding anything to it, that's just simply what it would take to have kept it with the same buying power. It's very hard for legislators to deal with this, because they look at this and say, well, look, you know, you only had, you know, $3,050 in 91, 92, now you have $5174. Well, do you buy a car for the same price you bought in 1991, 92? You might buy a house now, but it may be about the only thing. Almost everything else has had significant increases. The second piece in exhibit three then, gives you a sense of what the impact is in terms of the education opportunity gap. This one is calculated saying, if every district in the state levied $1,605 per pupil, which is the capped amount of operating levy referendum, this is how much it would cost a taxpayer with a $100,000 house. So if I'm in Orano, and I want to generate $1,605 per pupil on my $100,000 house, there are $100,000 houses in Orano, I'm not sure there are boathouses maybe, it would cost us, it cost me $125. If I was in West Tonk, it would cost me $143. If I was Hopkins, $152. St. Louis Park, $159. Dyna, $183. Notice, Northfield isn't on this page anymore. There's a whole bunch of them that are in the $100 to $200 range. When you flip to the backside to generate the same $1,605 levy, Northfield, it costs a taxpayer of a $100,000 house $341 to generate the a taxpayer of a $100,000 house $341 to generate the same levy. Hastings, $344. Rockford, $347. Columbia Heights, $353. Rosemont Apple Valley, $360. Lakeville, $362. So the issue is if you're a district with high valuation, your residential property taxpayers pay significantly less to generate the exact same amount of money. And so if you think about what it takes to get a levy passed in a district where the impact is very low, it's very different, which obviously is something I think we have to be very thankful to our taxpayers because they are really putting it out there to make sure that we have quality schools here. The next piece then is exhibit four. Remember, I talked about that $476,000 state equalizing factor? And again, that's represented by the black bar. What you see is Northfield is in the whitest gray, the state average is in the middle gray. What you'll notice is that we've always trailed a little bit behind the state average in terms of the growth of referendum market value. But when we got to 2009, our equalization amount disappeared because we were then over, over the $476,000 amount. You notice right now, we're down a little bit. That's what's happened with the, the recent real estate market and basically, for the first time now in three or four years, we actually get 2% equalization. The next page, exhibit five, however, shows you the, the impact that that's had over the years. So back in 94, 95, if, if we were doing an operating levy, basically, our district paid 31% of the cost, and the state picked up 69% of the cost. Again, we were a low valuation district. But as our valuation increased and the equalizing factor stayed exactly the same, you see that through the years, basically, any amount coming in equalization from the state fell away. And yet, what you need to understand is that there's a whole bunch of districts that have valuations way higher than ours, who, who basically, you know, were already in a beneficial situation because the impact on their taxpayers was lower. But our taxpayers went from only paying about 31 cents on the dollar, to the last several years, they've been paying 100% in property tax. So I think that gives you a pretty clear picture of kind of what our situation is. And that frankly, hasn't changed much. And when we have talked to legislators about, "Could you do something to the equalizing factor?" When we talk to them about the fact that it's not fair, the pushback, obviously, the last several years is, "We don't have any money. We can't fix it." And I think we all understand the struggles that the state has gone through. But, you know, my hope is that as they, they go back to take a look at this and going forward, that they have to realize that if they're going to count on local districts to fund a significant portion of the operation of schools, they can't be doing it in a way that makes it extremely difficult for some districts to get the, the money that they need to do the operating levy portion, and other districts do it with relative ease, which is where we are right now. The other thing I shared then with the first legislator I met with the other day, and I will share with others as we go through the next couple of months, it just, again, focusing on some policy issues. What we talked about today is basically, one, two, three, four new mandates, new principal evaluation, new teacher evaluation, modified and potentially increased testing, and increased efforts in terms of the kinds of things that will be required to address bullying and to report bullying. What, what we have been saying to our legislators is, "We know you never saw a mandate you didn't like, but we've got to deal with this. We've got to take a look at how do you address mandates? And if you're going to add mandates, then pay for them. Otherwise, look at how do you reduce them?" One of the major ones that we continue to face, and it gets worse every single year, is the paperwork and regulations in special education. We now have mandates that are significantly higher than the federal government's. We have the state basically making decisions to add procedures and rules without going through the legislature to, to make those happen. And they aren't necessarily having any significant benefit on kids as far as their rights or the programs that are being provided. That needs to change. And then finally, they need to look at a way not only to provide funding if we're going to do more with bullying, but also, how are they going to provide funding for a new teacher evaluation framework, which is going to have a significant increase in a very labor-intensive teacher evaluation process? Because right now, we're not seeing any resources being offered or even considered to basically put in place a significant increase. So that's basically what I have shared with, with, again, one of our legislative candidates, and I will share with others as we go forward. But it, it paints a pretty clear picture of what the issues are in terms of what needs to be happening at the state level to really come back to, does every kid have equal access to high-quality education? And my assertion at this point is they don't, and that your zip code does make a difference. And the, the willingness of your local taxpayers to tax themselves is making a huge difference because we now have a large hole between what the state is providing and funding and what districts need to operate. It's also why, when people think about the operating levies, operating levies, again, if you remember in the good old days, in the old, they used to be called excess levies. And the idea was they were supposed to be there to allow you to do something above and beyond what, what you wanted to, you wanted to create a new, brand-new program, you know, for a particular purpose, you could ask the voters to do an excess levy. Nobody is using the operating levy for excess. Everybody's using the operating levy to fill the hole. And that's the piece that I think we need to drive home to legislators as they come into session, because it is going to be a major issue, I think, as we go forward. Okay, questions about kind of where we stand in terms of the funding and policy issues as we face this 2013 legislative session? And I know I'm preaching to the choir, and most of you have heard this multiple times before, but I, I hope this gives you kind of a very clear little packet of goodies that you can share with people.
What board members are thinking? You've got a question? Okay, go ahead.
Is this on the website at the moment?
No, not yet.
They won't be putting it on the website, you think, for a version of it?
I, I am sure if I talked to my crack tech team, they would be, be willing to do something.
It really helps with the, the charts and the...
Yeah, and we'll just need to think about, how do we do that? Because we'll need to figure out how to reference the charts to the, to the document.
I have one question.
Yes.
So when I was looking at this, it gives us a nice history, and with this horrible gap, but I was thinking about, a couple of years back, we heard Kent Pikel talking at Parents United, and he was doing some forecasting, and it was about college readiness. And he said in 2020 is when the line is going to be crossed statewide. I don't know what about Northfield, where there's going to be more people over the age of 65 than will be looking at school-aged children. And what does that do to your funding model for property taxes? So looking at this and trying to think of what that's going to look like in the future, and 2020 isn't that far away anymore, I found it really, really frightening.
Yeah, and I, and I think those of you that have listened to our recently retired state demographic, Tom Gillespie, has kind of had that same message. He and Tom Stinson, the state economist, basically have kind of gone on the road and talked about that, about the fact that there are some major demographic changes that are occurring. And that's one of the pieces that's, that's going to have a huge impact, is that when you have, you have many fewer kids in comparison to many fewer senior citizens, both of whom are needing services, and the issue becoming, you know, how do we choose among important services to give? My argument always would be, in the end, if we don't serve the young, they won't support the rest of us as they, as they get old enough to go to work. But at the same time, if you are struggling, trying to figure out how, how you're going to make ends meet, or pay your gas bill, or whatever, as a senior citizen on a fixed income, I think that's obviously going to be an issue. It's also one of the things that, as we've done our operating levies, we've always focused in on the, the circuit breakers that are in place to address seniors on fixed incomes, both in terms of the taxes they pay and how those are structured. So that there are some things that the state has done to help work with that particular piece, but it's, it's obviously coming at us.
No?
If I can put my thoughts together on this, it seems to me there's another component in here, and that is the value of the, the salary of the jobs that are being retired are not being replaced by the new jobs that are coming in. And one could argue with some of the politics of, or the, not the politics, the decision, the business decision to do offshore work and so on. But it seems to me the, the average income is spiraling downward as more people are retiring. Don't know if that's true or not. I don't have statistical evidence.
Well, the, the other piece we know, and again, Tony Wagner that we heard the other day, who is a Harvard professor and basically, you know, has studied the concepts around innovation and creativity, really is, and those of you maybe who've heard Willard Daggett before, may remember, you know, the, the discussion is around, what are the kinds of jobs that are out there now? And the fact that any job that is routine and repetitive, that in 1950 would have given you a house and a car and a two-week vacation in the summer with your family with one income, is gone. It's, it's being automated. It's being eliminated because we can do those jobs with technology. And so the thing is that the, the best-paying jobs really require a whole different skill set than what's there, which then I guess spirals us back to the discussion around assessment, which is, if the 21st century skills are collaboration, teamwork, problem-solving, whatever, and we're assessing kids on their ability to do math standard in terms of division or algebraic equation solving, we're missing the boat on a big chunk of the skill set that really will make a difference. Also, the interesting piece is when you listen to people talk about what they'd like to emulate. In America, we're busy emulating Singapore and Hong Kong and China, and trying to be more like them. And what are they doing? They're trying to figure out how to get their kids to be more innovative and creative because they aren't. They, they basically do the rope stuff, and they do it very, very quickly. But they don't do the stuff that really launches new ideas and, and creates new services or new products or, or whatever. At the same time, we also struggle with the fact that, you know, we have kids who probably think the most highly of themselves and how well they're doing in comparison to maybe how they're doing. And the rest of the world would, is struggling because their kids think so poorly of themselves. And we think about, you know, our suicide rate and our depression rate, the suicide and depression rate, and many of those countries is significantly higher than ours because they never believe that they're at, at the level that they should be. Lots of things to think about.
There you go. Thank you so much.
All right, Matt, it's, it's up to you to now save us for the evening, okay?
Whip it up, Matt.
So board members, you should have in your packet, uh, supplies.
Lift us up after that, will you please?
I won't sing. That won't be uplifting.
Be the wind beneath my wings.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I follow the record.
That follows the example of things.
Or when things...
This, this presentation won't include no animal references, I can promise you that, so.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Dr. Richardson asked that I come and just provide a brief update about the activities that we've had over the last, essentially, just a little bit more than two months, two months and two days. You approved the first phase of our transformational technology plan on June 11th, and we busily got to work and got things going, and we are still doing that. So I'm here to give you just a brief update. So the first piece that we want to talk about is that, very quickly after that meeting, we took delivery of boxes that look like this, 10 packs of iPads. Those arrived in late June. And we use the inventory system right over here to my right, the high school library Destiny system. And basically, Cindy Samuelson is one of our district technology specialists, and Rebecca Glazing, our Northfield High School media specialist, did an outstanding job of processing all of those iPads that came in. They all have multiple stickers on them, and they're in our system. We actually checked them out to staff when they came for training, just like a library book. So when you picked out the color, the color cover that you wanted, we brought you up and scanned it, and it was impressive how fast it went. And so they, we really relied on some other contacts, like how we check out textbooks to high school students. So very similar, went very efficiently, and we're very pleased. And Rebecca and Cindy just deserve a lot of credit. They just did a fantastic job of making sure that we know where those pieces are. The next piece that has been really time-intensive this summer are the folks who prefer not to be recognized, but too bad, they're going to be recognized. Anyway, Nate, this is our network manager, Nate Knutson, right here. Can use my little laser pointer to show you. And Nate and Dwayne Johnson, another technology specialist in our district, have been really busy over the last several weeks in the high school and the middle school, updating our wireless infrastructure. And that's a really important piece because one of the components of the iPad that's so important is to be able to have that wireless connectivity. And I don't know if you can see, I think I dropped my laser, but, well, here. If you can see, I don't know if you can see, I'm going to point at it. You see this, it's behind the screen over here. You might not be able to see it from where you're sitting, but when you walk past, there's this little thing that's hanging down, looks like a little spaceship, like a circular spaceship.
Up there.
It's up on the ceiling. They've been hanging those throughout the district, and those are our wireless arrays that we have been hanging up, and they're so far, so good. There's, we, we do learn something every day, and that's a good thing, because thankfully, we love to learn. In fact, we learned something tonight as we're trying to stream our board thing, so we'll figure that out as we go. But what you see on the screen here is something called a heat map. And this is kind of a neat piece of something that we really liked with the software that came with this, is that this is a map of the high school right here. And you'll see there's all these little hot spots and heat areas, the, the parts that are red or orange, and these are almost like a animated weather map. And that's showing the signal strength in terms of those pieces. It's kind of actually a little bit eerie. We can even tell if some, all of us in our room, if a few of us were hitting the wireless connection with our smartphones, it would even be able to tell us the brand name. And if it's a device that we own, it would actually be able to tell us the name that we've put on that computer. So very interesting. We're going to have LoJack on the kids, you know, very cool. But the wireless infrastructure is a really important piece because we really felt we needed to have almost a university-level kind of service to folks. And Nate Knutson and Dwayne Johnson have just done a fantastic job of installing them all ourselves, saved us quite a bit of money with that, consulted with our partner Ties, again, did some great work with the wireless infrastructure. And again, we get it in the summer so that we can learn and hopefully have all the glitches ironed out before faculty return for the school year. Our tech boot camp took place two weeks ago, and we had more than 200 people attend at least one session. We had a little more than 90 last year. We're trying to figure out why we had so many more people this year. It turns out, if, if you get an iPad, that a lot of people like to show up, so. But as Dr. Richardson said, we really had some engaged learners, and it was really great. And so I, I believe the last count, we had 212 that were distributed. We're planning about 300, is what the plan is. And we've got three more sessions set up over the next couple of weeks on the 17th, the 20th, and the 24th, because we did hold it during one week, and we held it during a week where many, especially high, teachers who have high school children were taking off, and it was just, there's never a good week to go, but we know there's a number of other people who are coming, so we're working through that. And while we were really heavy on the iPad sessions, we did a session iPad 1, we did that session six different times. We had a session called iPad 2 that we did twice. We have... we averaged, our biggest group was 57, our smallest was 24, so we had pretty good attendance at all of them. But it wasn't just about iPad and iPad 2, we had multiple sessions, we had four sessions on Google Apps, and using Google Apps both on the computer and starting to talk about how we could use it on the iPad, though the training was specific to the computer. Mark Thornton ran all those sessions, did an excellent job. We did a session on School Center, which is the webpage software that the school district uses, teachers use. Kurt Mickelson, one of our middle school teachers led that. We did a session on Viewpoint with Dr. Robert, Roger Jenny led that, and again, a very successful session there. Eric Sandberg, a young teacher at our high school, did a session on personal learning networks, talking about how we can use things like Twitter to engage students and to use it as our own professional learning environment, very cool. So, we did a number of different pieces like that, not just this, and of course, we did, we had four, or, it was four sessions on Smartboards as well, and we had Missy Spitzak and Aliati from Sibley Elementary who led those sessions. Then we also did what we call a Smartboard Workshop, where Danielle Amundsen from Greenbelt Park, a very experienced and outstanding Smartboard user, basically had an open lab where teachers could come and start preparing things for the school year, and when they got stuck and wanted to add something that they didn't know how to do, Danielle would help them through that, that was the intent of, of that session. So, we feel we had a pretty good variety, of course, the iPad stuff was the, the areas that were, were very popular, but again, we're very pleased with the attendance, we're very pleased with the engagement of people, very willing to learn, very excited, it was, it was very cool, good stuff. So, what have we learned so far? One of the first things we learned on Monday morning of Tech Boot Camp, and that Apple didn't invite a whole bunch of people signing up simultaneously, they thought we were trying to cheat them, and thankfully, we got that resolved very quickly. We've also learned that the Apple Care is a good investment, because it would be, I'd be remiss to report that we have had one that was broken already, and where we're enacting our, our replacement strategy, so while that particular individual, who shall remain nameless, felt very terrible about it, was, it was truly an accident.
It wasn't me.
It was, it was truly an accident, and that's exactly why we bought that insurance, and we'll be practicing how that works here, we have already made contact today. We also learned that projecting is critical, you know, we're projecting the iPad here through this particular computer, and this is not as easy as it sounds. You'd think that, oh, it should be very easy to go ahead and project these kinds of devices. Well, there is, are some simple ways, but that would involve plugging them in, and plugging them in kind of defeats the purpose of being able to move around, though that is a strategy we will most likely be employing at some point this fall. In addition, there are new strategies that you can do, what I'm doing here, projecting through the computer for a very low cost. You've probably seen me before at previous meetings use the Apple TV, that little black box that we projected through, but those are $100 apiece, that's not quite in the budget. So, we are looking at lower-cost wireless ways of being able to project. So, for example, the app that I'm using on this particular device, $15 as opposed to 100. So, we're looking at those kinds of pieces, and we're looking at what's the best strategy that's reliable. This is a very new part of this market, and so we're trying to find something that is, is going to be reliable for teachers, but you could already see, you know, it not, already see and hear the, the wheels turning and the ideas churning of how they could use the device with their students, not waiting for next year, but how can I use it with my one iPad this year, what can I do to make students' lives better now? So, that was, that's an important piece we're going to be addressing, and we will not have a, we've told people, you've got to be patient, because this almost new stuff is almost coming out every couple of weeks with that, so we're going to be patient and make a decision that's wise for the district. We also found that Notability, for those of you who have an iPad at home, Notability is a little note-taking application for, we got it for 49 cents apiece, because we bought so many copies, and you can actually record audio, you know, while you're taking the notes, you can enter with digital ink, you can type, you can import a PDF, and you can actually annotate it, so a lot of real cool applications, what we think in the future for students and teachers are, we already are seeing teachers and administrators who are trying to use Notability to be able to take notes at various meetings and those kinds of pieces. Again, we're learning some things, there are things that aren't always perfect, but that's why we have this year to iron out a lot of those pieces. So, so those are some of the things that we've learned so far. What are our next steps? Uh, we're working on our task force meetings, we held two of those task force meetings today, our communications task force, and basically our content and app selection framework task force. We have two additional task forces on Wednesday, our professional learning group, now I'm drawing a blank on what the other group is on Thursday, but that's all, our policy and practice group is getting together on, on Wednesday as well. We've got the additional training that I mentioned, the 17th, the 20th, and the 24th will also hold some during pre-service, because we do have folks who have summer jobs, and I've talked to a number of people, when I, we've had 10 sessions, you know, scheduled, and people say, my, my summer job just doesn't let me get there on those pieces, and so we'll have additional training sessions during workshop week to help folks out. And then we're continuing to work, we're for more training, where our goal is to have an onsite training at each building every week during the year, what we would call a quick hitter fashion, so it'd be a short 15 to 20-minute training session on one topic, so that when you walk out of there, you've got a, a skill that you can use right now, either for your own professional improvement or for your students. And then we're going to continue to communicate through our blog and other means, you know, we have slowed down our blog posts right now, because I didn't think people were all that interested in, well, today we unboxed three of the, you know, I mean, so we've, we've gone to, we had one post in, in July, and we just recently did another post here in August, and we'll get back, our goal will be again, between four and five times a month on that blog, and trying to also maybe have some other local resources pick that up to be able to, to point people toward it. But, you know, the interesting, I put a post out on Saturday morning, just kind of reviewing Tech Boot Camp, and we have had 30 people look at it already. That shocked me, that, that's great, all right, we love it. So, those are our next steps. So, that's just a brief review of, of how we've gone, so in summary, you know, we got the devices in, we've processed them, we've got them in the system, we have what we think is an efficient way to make sure that we know where they are, we had a, what I think is a pretty successful boot camp, and then every day, we're learning something different and new, and we're reacting and proacting and trying to, to see things that might come as a result of that as well. So, in short, we are on the track that I thought we would be, and not any further, not any more behind, so I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic as to where we are at today. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
What other school districts are you looking at that have implemented, you know, what we're trying to do, and are, are ahead of us that you're trying to learn from? Or maybe you should.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. We have reached out unsuccessfully to a couple of smaller school districts that were among the first in Minnesota, given Fairfax, Winthrop is one, we'll continue to try to reach out to. We are trying to learn from some of our neighbors, like Lakeville and Farmington, though they're quite a different project, I think, than what we are, so, but we just talked today at our communications task force about how can we come together with other districts to learn from each other, to, to determine, hey, what did you guys find for phonemic awareness with, you know, kids in second grade? The, the thing that I would really like to do is not just, whenever we talk about this, we talk about Farmington and Lakeville, because they're the two local districts who are right up the road from us, but, you know, what I'm interested in contacting is Crosby-Irington. That's way out of our, but, you know, they, they started this with elementary school kids. That's totally the opposite of what other places have done. Why not look at places outside the state, and we're, we are reviewing a number of blogs and other pieces from outside the state, but it's time for us to start looking at what are some partnerships we could make that we'll share with you if you share with us, you know, if that makes that kind of sense.
Well, some are going to be friendly and some aren't, but everybody should try to, you know, get on the same page, it's the same, same, same state, same idea, so, I mean, I just encourage to collaborate, and, you know, let's be leaders in that, too.
And you know, the thing that's interesting, Jeff, about that is I have not had anybody say, oh, I don't want to help you, called a good friend at LaSour Henderson, who has got a student project, a student program starting this fall, and frankly, you know, they're working feverishly, because they have students with this stuff in two weeks. I know, I talked with a teacher today who said she had a call from a friend in a neighboring district who's going to, in two weeks has to start teaching a course she hasn't taught in a while with all the students having the device. There's some pressure on some of those folks right now, so my hope is to let them, you know, get to that point where they feel like they've got a few things going early in the year, and then really go after them again, to say, let's, let's start setting up some of these partnerships.
There you go.
Thanks, Jeff. Other questions? Noel?
Thanks for letting us know who the leaders from the staff are that led some of these sessions. It's really important, I think, to have internal leadership, because it's probably going to be someone you can call on later also in the program, so thank you, Matt.
You bet, and I think that there's some method to that madness, hopefully next year we'll even have more of our own staff, because one of the things we know is that teachers really are more receptive to their colleagues leading them than they are to maybe even someone outside the district, or even an administrator or someone else. I mean, we got a lot of comments in the post, uh, Tech Boot Camp survey, saying there are people who are very appreciative that they were learning from their colleagues.
I said, you have a question, on the iPad insurance, which is, is what per unit per year?
We paid a total of $79, if I'm, going back, I believe it was $79 per unit total, not per year, so basically about $25, $20, $25, $26 per year on the lease, and basically, instead, if we did not have that, we would have to essentially pay half the replacement cost, so if I had taken it into the Apple Store, they'd charge me $249 to exchange it, where in this case, we've paid $79 over a three-year period for this unit, and I'll pay $50 to have it replaced, so.
So, if little Jimmy or Janie turns his iPad into a Frisbee, then you can replace, is it, is it one or two for 50 bucks?
Two of them at 50 bucks at each.
And what is, what is the, the protocol after the two, and who pays, we pay the 50, is there any intervention from, you know, outside sources or family for abuse, or?
That is what we're going to be talking about on Wednesday with our policy and practice group, because we don't have students with these devices in general this year, you know, they, they will be using their teacher's device at some point, but that's going to be a piece we'll be looking at. We've seen a number of different pieces, we've seen districts that will charge nothing, we will see districts who say, family, you pay the entire replacement cost, we're seeing districts who are charging a deposit upfront, saying, we're going to charge you $50 to get the thing at the beginning of the year, and if you don't have any damage at the end of the year, we'll give you the $50 back. That's something I think is unique to each locality, and we have, that's going to be one of the charges we have for our policy and practices procedural group, that's looking at writing those kinds of student policies that we put in place next year, if we were to go forward with, and, and, I can't even talk anymore, an implementation with the students next year.
And then what have you learned from, you know, what is too young to give a child an iPad? I mean, for, you know, that's a...
It's a fair question, you know, it's interesting, because that question has come up, and it's a very valid discussion piece, because we have some concern about some things like fine motor skills at the lower, we've not ever said we're going to replace the whole shooting match with an iPad. What we've said is it's something that we think has an opportunity to be a very good accelerator at all levels. Recently, Inver Grove Heights Elementary School got attention in a national article, the Leading with Technology Magazine, as I think it was called, two first-grade teachers that got a grant where their first-grade students are using an iPad all day, every day, and they're talking about, you know, now, they didn't take them home, in fact, at the beginning of the year, nobody even got up to get the iPad, because you, could you imagine, you know, 36-year-olds going to, you know, so they actually handed them out. They're finding some real good strategies in personalizing, especially early learning, and overcoming some of those hurdles to literacy and numeracy in some of those areas, but that's Inver Grove Heights, and I've mentioned that I, I understand, though I've not had direct contact with Crosby-Irington, made a choice to have their elementary students get them before their high school students. It's very interesting how different folks do it, but we're going to take all that into consideration, and what I've been talking with our teachers about at every one of these sessions has been, we need to have a district-wide conversation over the next few months about what is right for us, and what someone else does may make sense for them, but it may not, may not make sense for us.
Thanks, Jeff. Other board members have questions? I had one.
Excellent.
Um, so, this is really well-known in the community, that all of the instructional staff have these iPads, and I'm imagining, if I were a teacher, I might feel some pressure from, you know, what, what are people expecting, and I thought it might be fair to let the community know, I mean, as a parent, you know, you shouldn't set your expectations that Tuesday after Labor Day, that all things are different, because there's an iPad in the room, right?
Right, and because there's one iPad in the room, yes.
Exactly, one iPad.
And I will tell you that I'll, I'll share with you what I shared with teachers, which is, I shared that we should feel pretty good, because this board has demonstrated incredible trust in them. You have, I believe you've demonstrated incredible trust in the staff by allowing them to, to move forward with their, this device, not only in the fact that we've given them the device, but also in the fact that we've given them an even greater resource, which is time. As I mentioned, there's a lot of school districts that did this in a very harried fit, no, I shouldn't say harried, but it was a very aggressive fashion, to where they have people who are expected to be up and running, you know, this fall. We know that there's some good things with that, having that kind of pressure, but many, many teachers said they really valued the fact that the board has given them an opportunity to have an entire year to prepare. We think that that's reasonable, we think it gives the best opportunity for success. But this is going to, you're, you're thinking about, even if we were to do a full student implementation next year, it's not a turn the light switch on kind of piece, because it is something that you're talking about taking the way that we've taught for 100 years, and changing it pretty significantly in a short amount of time, and that will take time. It will not take one year, it probably won't take two years, to where people see that it's, you know, everything is, and everything may never, it probably will never get to that complete, because it's, it's another tool that in the correct person's hands can become a powerful tool. So, this year's expectation is that you are learning, and that you are attempting to use it when it makes sense, and you're, you are expected to be able to have it at school, obviously, that's the basic expectation when school is here, the device is here. Your expectation is, how can I use this for my own professional efficiency, things like record-keeping, things like data collection, you know, those kinds of pieces, even keeping up with my electronic communication, as we're always talking about how we can communicate better with our public. The third is, not only imagining how can I use this right now with people, with students in my classroom, but how would I do things differently if I had a student with every one of these devices, or if I had 10 of these devices in my room? What are the ways that I would do things differently? And that's really what their challenge is for the year. Also, we've asked them, use the device for your own professional development, not just in the technology area, but you can connect to things like the TED Talks, a number of other professional development resources that can improve their skills in other areas through the technology, because it's not about the technology, it's about what the technology can do to accelerate learning, if that makes sense. So, does that answer your, and I have got, I have a sheet that I could certainly have sent out, we, we gave out a Goldenrod Sheet at every session, which was, here what the district's expectations are for you this year.
I think actually that would be helpful.
Yep. I have a stack of them in my office.
Great. Thanks, Matt.
Yep, anything else?
Matt, I, I would just add to the, I think, one of the most powerful pieces I saw at the training was when they, when we gave individual teachers the ability to share apps that they had found. And again, Matt was using the same system, with the idea that each individual teacher, when, when they were called on, basically clicked their screen from their iPad popped up on the projector.
Most of the time.
Most of the time, they, they talked the rest of the staff through what it was, and this is how I'm using it, and this is how it's working. And you could just see the light bulbs going on for people of saying, think about what would happen if every child in my room had one of these, and we were working on something, and we said, Johnny, let's take a look at what you've come up with, and, and have that student be able to pop it up on the screen and share what they did, and then, and then letting each individual student be able to do that. The ability to recognize them, the ability to reinforce the work that they're doing, the ability to, to basically share those pieces on a regular basis, I think is extremely powerful, and it just, I think you could see the teachers responding to, gee, how could I use this with kids? So, I, I think, I think we're going to see a lot happen this year, but I would reinforce what Matt's saying in terms of, of the fact that we're dealing with 300 individuals, and they, you have the early adopters that really wanted them, you know, a year ago, and wanted them for all their kids at the same time, we have those people in the middle that are working their way along, and we have some people that are saying, I'm still not quite sure how I'm going to be able to use this effectively. And, and I think that the big difference in the way we've approached this from really some of our neighbors and some of the other districts across the state, is we've made that conscious decision that we take the time to train teachers to do it right. And most of, I think the feedback we've gotten from people has been, you're doing the right thing, you know, because if, if teachers don't really understand it and get it and can use it effectively, it's not going to get used when we get kids using them the way it should be, and I think this has the best chance of getting that to happen, so.
I'm developing a little what I, it's kind of the equivalent to the grief process that you go through, the grief, and there's, this one, it's the sheer excitement that people have, and then as I start to see them a, a few days later, it's, oh, there's so much to this, I could do something, and it's almost, it's almost stress, you know, in terms of wanting to do the right, and I will just share one piece of how a teacher made a connection, because I think this is very worthwhile for you to hear. There's a free app that's called ShowMe, and essentially, ShowMe is a blank piece of paper, but it's got something special, which you can record whatever you write, so imagine that it is a, imagine that's a recording, not just sketch, that has recording ability. And so, we demonstrated that, it's a, it's a popular tool for flipping a classroom, if you've heard that term. So, immediately, we had a second-grade teacher says, you know what? I can use this immediately in two ways. When I have a student who's struggling with a mathm- When I have a student who's struggling with a mathematical process, rather than trying to follow through what they did on the paper, I could actually have them do it and show me. They could be writing on the screen and show me, you know, showing me how they did it, and then narrating it. So, now I can mediate their thinking because I see what step they got stuck at, and they're telling me what they were thinking at the time when they were doing it. If that doesn't tell you how people are thinking, you know, creatively, that's pretty powerful. This, another teacher with that same piece says, boy, I could do my weekly classroom newsletter with this. And I could have these pieces in, and I could narrate it, and it immediately posts it to the web. Now, I could demonstrate for my parents, here's what we learned today, or here are some of the concepts we learned this week, and this is how we're teaching lattice math, or, you know, whatever else they may be doing that week. So, people with a little free tool like that already had a ton of ideas. And this is where we're going to lose them because they're going to go all over, and that's okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. All right. We are on to our one item for individual action.
Our one item of action? Nine o'clock.
So, board members, we have a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school board election.
Second.
Okay, moved by Carrie, seconded by John. Any discussion? And I believe this has to be a roll call vote?
That's correct. Strap one.
Aye.
Quinow.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Maple.
Aye.
Blossom.
Aye.
And Iverson.
Aye.
Very good. Move on to our items in the consent grouping. I will remind the board members that there were a number of items added from the table file, including some personnel items and one gift agreement. Anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? A motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ann.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information. Filing dates for the election to the school board. I would remind the public that the filing dates for the affidavits of candidacy for school board ends Tuesday. That's tomorrow. The offices are, district offices open from 8 till 5 p.m. And the filing date has been up on the district website, but we will be taking affidavits of candidacy through 5 p.m. tomorrow. And those are for four-year terms, and there are four members that, four seats that would be up for election. All right. And I'm just looking for the table file. Is there any other items for information? No. So, that was the one item. And then, we have future meetings, Monday, August 27th. And then, we're into September, Monday, September 10th. Looking for a motion for adjournment? Moved by Noel. Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.